Good evening. Let's call on the board of the Shakopee School Board Learning Session of May 6th. Sarah, please call the board.
Aldrich.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Mickey and.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Tomzik.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
And Bowerman.
Yes ma'am. Could you please join me in rise with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to begin with good news items tonight. We've got two real fun ones tonight. Recognize a bunch of our students. And the first one is for students who travel.
Stand by that team.
Okay. Some of them are coming in right now as a matter of fact. These guys is who we're recommending for participation in the National Shakopee Bowl. And the leader of that group, Naomi Sato, is, I'm going to call, Naomi, why don't you come on up, step up. And why don't you tell us about these wonderful students and what they did? A little bit about the program.
All right. So there's like a Minnesota regional competition called the J-Quiz, which we have been participating every year. And so this year, our Level 3 team with Trevor and Hannah and Carson, who is present today, they placed the first. And then they were able to go with the support of the Japan American Society of Minnesota. And the Level 2 team with Sarah, Samuel, and Tia, sorry, Tia, they were competing at the Level 2. And then there were some strange things happened. That's always happens, right, to you. So they had, they were tied at the finals. And the first, at the end of the first, sort of a tiebreaker, they were announced the winner. But, okay, we did something wrong, so we have to have you come back again to the. Then the second round, they did not win, or they lost to Eastview team. So, you know, we were volunteers and we had to bring these girls to the Nationals, you know, by doing a fundraising, which we did. And so, yeah, anybody can go actually by paying, but the first place team, they get funded a lot by the Japan American Society. So, but the Level 2 team went to the National and then they placed the fifth. And then this Eastview team that placed the first, they placed sixth.
Push from each other.
And then Level 3 team, they did well too. Yes, they did not place top five, but yes, they competed really well.
Awesome.
If I may ask, what is the?
Oh, what is it? Okay. Do you want to tell them?
It's kind of like Math Bowl or Knowledge Bowl, based off of Japanese culture, language, history, everything in between. And some questions ask us about current politics, some questions ask us about how does a sentence, how is a sentence formed in Japanese? Or some questions even ask, hey, what's this Kanji, which is one of the three alphabets that they have?
How's reading, writing, speaking, culture, trivia?
Everything.
That's a lot.
Yeah. So we usually divvied up amongst our three teammates. Carson, who's not here, he did Kanji, which is one of the three major alphabets with over 3,000 characters. I focused on culture and he focused on sentences, which was, worked out well for us, for J-Quiz, but not Shakopee Bowl.
There's 3,000 characters in just one alphabet?
In one of the alphabets. The other two have 46 characters each. One's meant for non-Japanese words and the other one is for Japanese words. And then the last alphabet, the fourth one, we'll call it, is just, how would we say it? Arabic number? No, not numbers.
Arabic.
Our alphabet.
Romantic alphabet.
Yeah, our alphabet. It's called Romaji.
Okay.
Wow.
Yeah, so they did prepare, started preparing in, within October.
October or so, yeah. Every Wednesday for about an hour.
So are you guys, what year in school are y'all?
Seniors.
So, something you'd want to do again, perhaps?
Definitely.
This is our second time participating, his second time going to DC.
Excellent.
Very nice.
Outstanding. So do you plan on incorporating this in your future plans at all?
My future consists of me teaching English as a second language in Japan, actually, which I would absolutely love to do. I want to help nurture the students and all that.
I have a high school classmate who's an English literature professor over at a university in Japan.
Really? That's so cool. Do you know college by any chance?
Not off the top of my head. But he loves it over there.
Yeah. I'd like to go and enroll in college there because it's just about, it's cheaper than SDSU is here, at $14,000 a year, so.
Well, congratulations to all you all for not only your accomplishments for representing Shakopee so well, and thank you too for leading this group. So thank you. All right. I didn't quite get through.
I brought it.
Oh! Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Wow.
So let's ensure you're ready.
And let's take the picture over here.
Let me look over here.
She wants to move the picture over here.
Where do you want?
Yeah, right here.
Over there. Okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, that's right.
Do it over there, it's better. Better than over here.
You give it a little more.
Absolutely.
Yes. No, no, you go on, you take yours first.
We'll do the rest, then.
Okay. One, two, three, four more. One, two, three. Thanks, thank you. Take it off. He's going to write anyways.
Good. Congratulations to everyone. Congratulations. I feel like Price is Right. Come on down. Again, another student group, come in.
All the way across that screen, it's just kind of like that. It's all the way across.
Don't sit down, Elizabeth. I'm going to call you right up. So now we're going to recognize participants in the State Health Occupations Students in America Competition, so HOSA is abbreviation that I even remember from my high school days. But what a great looking group of kids. But Elizabeth Deere represents those groups. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about them and what they did and how we can recognize them?
Yeah, so I always commend kids that take an opportunity that they've been given. And so they saw an opportunity in a HOSA and we had probably a record number of students come out for HOSA this year, and maybe even a record number that wanted to go to state. So we took 30 kids to state and of that 17 kids qualified for Nationals, 11 of them are going to go on to Orlando this June and give it a shot in several different competitive events. Do you guys want to talk about some of the events that you competed in?
Just tell us what event you were in.
So for state hours and creative problem solving, HOSA Bowl, and both of those are team events, so I got to work with different members and it was really fun working with the different team members and trying to figure out how to solve a problem.
Great. Tell us your first name when you do this too.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, yes.
My name is Avni and I competed in Medical Innovations Original, where my partner and I had to make up our own medical innovation and present it to a panel of judges. And they can ask questions and we just have to present our idea with like a poster, a prototype, and yeah, we did really well. We got second in state.
Outstanding.
So you had to build something, actually?
Yeah, ours is more, we had like a simulation kind of thing. It wasn't an exact prototype because ours was a little bit more complex, so we couldn't build a prototype, but we had posters and graphs and all our research and everything.
I'm DJ and at state I participated in HOSA Bowl and Job Seeking Skills. HOSA Bowl is just like a little trivia kind of game that you play with a team. And then job seeking is just where you come up with a resume and cover letter and you just sit and interview. And yeah. Nice job.
Cool.
I'm Katie and I was in Creative Problem Solving and Medical Terminology. So Creative Problem Solving, I just had to work with a group to solve whatever problem the game was. And then Medical Terminology was just a task we got sent for.
I'm Sheri and I was also in Creative Problem Solving and I was also in Healthcare Display, which is where I researched health IUDs, which I was interested in. And we did neurosurgery.
Oh wow.
I'm Paige and I work for Sheri on the Healthcare Display. And then I also did CPR in first aid. So me and another girl, we went and performed CPR in first aid for some judges.
I'm Floru and I competed in Prepared Speaking, Job Seeking Skills, and Creative Problem Solving. And Prepared Speaking is basically a five-minute speech where the prompt this year was define your purpose. And you basically say why that is so important. And the other two were touchdown.
My name's Kristen. I did a public service announcement and I did that with a group.
I'm Sloan and I also did a public service announcement and I did a healthcare display about plastic surgery.
So what was the public service announcement about?
Stopping smoking in our generation.
And I won't read them, but we had multiple members of your group that participated in multiple events and placed multiple times, so that was fantastic. We had events like Behavioral Health, Epidemiology, Prepared Speaking, Research, Persuasive Writing and Speaking, Biomedical Debate, HOSA Bowl, Biomedical Lab Science, Job Seeking Skills, Original Medical Innovation, and Public Service Announcement. I think I got them all. Having spent almost 30 years in the healthcare industry, I can say you guys are wonderful and I hope you follow this as a career. And I feel very good about where our future lies, in whatever field you happen to go into. Outstanding results. So we want to recognize you. Now, are y'all different years in school? How many are seniors? Okay. Well, we got a great returning team then. So that's outstanding. So we have certificates. Elizabeth, I'm probably going to let you hand these out. We want to congratulate you guys and I think I want to get a picture too, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck, whatever comes next.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll get a picture of everyone, yes.
I think we're going over here to take a picture.
It's a bad, it's a good.
Argues with me.
It's good. This way so the TV isn't shot. One, two, three. Nice, thank you.
Oh my god.
One, two, three.
I want a shout out by both of you.
Perfect, thank you.
Congratulations. Great job. All right. Now the fun stuff's over. The business that we have to get to. All right, let's move to item number four, consideration of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or changes? I know we're going to move item 8.1 up ahead of six. Is there anything else? There, anybody? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to accept the agenda with that one change.
Second.
Matt, second, your discussion. All those in favor, if I may say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any consent items, so we'll just move on to what would be item six, but we're going to move to item eight. So I know we've got a few folks, there's Jenny, and you're going to bring up a couple guests as well. So we're going to recognize our friends at the Shakopee Midwakten Sioux Community for who have made two grants to our district, which is absolutely phenomenal. And I'm going to let Jenny and our representative talk about it and explain what this is all about. So come on up.
So as you mentioned, we applied for a grant in two parts. And I think it's probably best if you two introduce yourselves and talk about exactly what your parts are.
Okay, I am Tara Orsted. I am a West Middle School Life Science teacher and it's been, and I'm also a Shakopee resident. But it's been my life kind of long professional goal to make sure that the kids are outside, doing science, being scientists as much as possible. And so right outside our learning commons, very close to the science classrooms, there is a wonderful space where I thought we could get outside and actually do some science, you know, and learning about life right out there in the environment. So we've started building the garden and it really will be an interdisciplinary learning space. And the food that is grown there is going to go to our teen chef and snack attack classes. So whatever we grow in the spring, they actually get to use in the fall. Plus, we're going to be out there using it in every single unit for our curriculum. There is a tie to the garden, which is fantastic. But we're also getting a chance to beautify Shakopee and contribute to like an additional pathway as the sidewalk pathways kind of all intersect the bike way. And so we have started and it's been wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
I'm John Omen. I'm a tech ed teacher over at East Middle School. I am also the head coach of the high school mountain bike team. Our team includes grades six through 12. Our team is now going into their fifth season this coming fall and the team has expanded where we've gone from 15 the first year in 2015. And we're projecting about 70 kids on bikes this year, so the growth has been phenomenal. And statewide too, it's not just here. So with the help of the grants, we are looking to build a three to four mile, single track mountain bike trail here in our community. This is mostly to be used for like a practice space. Since our team's getting big enough, we kind of have to spread out to both different locations. This will keep us off the roads, keep our kids safe, and will have a lasting impact on our community and our kids.
And I think with this grant, 20% of it had to come from other sources. So in your case, volunteer labor from the parents, largely on the students.
Building themselves.
And you got a ship grant.
Yes, I also got a ship grant through the county and through volunteer hours just last, or two Fridays ago. We have a huge interest in the student population. They're super jazzed about it. We had 40 students on a Friday afternoon, when it was beautiful outside, come and participate and help us put mulch down. We did 180 bags of mulch, which is like two and a half pallets of mulch in 25 minutes.
Wow.
You said it.
Yeah. I heard Steph over there.
They were so excited. I mean, some of these kids were the size of a mulch bag. It was great to see them doing the teamwork and getting out there and having, you know, beating their hands dirty and smelling that fresh air. It was wonderful.
Rebecca's here.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Rebecca's here from the tribe, so please introduce yourself, but also talk to us about why you guys are here.
I'm Rebecca Kukstratyn, I'm the Secretary Treasurer for the Shakopee Midwakten Sioux Community. This is, I believe, our third year that we've offered these trail grants and we're really just looking to connect our communities. You know, these partnerships we've built with the surrounding areas are really important. And I think our mission aligns with your mission, you know, educating students and finding innovative ways to get them outdoors, connected with nature. So thank you so much for your guys' work in keeping our students connected. I mean, they really are our most valuable resource, precious resource. So thank you for this. We're excited, not only for the school, but kind of the greater community will have access to these resources too, it sounds like. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think, well, yes, we want to make sure and recognize you, the tribe, for doing that. You're already a great partner in so many ways with the district. You're a champion for one of our academies, but this is just another example. And we really appreciate it and so many kids are going to benefit in so many ways from this kind of thing. So thank you very much and please take that message back as well.
I definitely will. Thank you all.
Thank you. So we actually have that listed as action item, so it's kind of a paper complete at this point, but I'm going to hit a motion to accept these grants and formally thank the tribe. Let me finish the sentence. Joe? What do I have to say?
Call.
Okay. Any other comments you'd care to make?
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's amazing. When they presented at the facilities coming back time, just talking about the bike trail that is, and what they're doing with this competition and the kids that are involved and, you know, no or low cost to our district, it's amazing. It's really amazing.
The trail will be at the south side. And a lot of it is in, you know, there's zoning and all those things, a lot of it goes into it, but a lot of it is land that can't be used for place. So it's using unusable space, which is fantastic, right? It's, you know, provide these hills and trails, it's fantastic. What do you do, draw it based on Google Maps the first time? That'd be fantastic trail, I might even try like.
Your insurance up to date, Matt? All right. All those in favor of accepting and thanking the tribe for their support of these two grants, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, thank you, the tribe. All right, let's move back to item 6.1. This is an MOU on the stretch calendar and we're going to have Mike and Gail, are they going to come down?
Nancy can join us.
Nancy too. I know you come up for the next one, so you just get to hang out here.
That's right. Stay one.
So I'll just turn it over to you too, you have more expertise in this, but this is certainly something that I'm very supportive of. It just makes sense and it helps us clarify our expectations in this particular area. So there's several different reasons why we're interested. This is something that we have in the contract, you know, very limited portion, it really only applies to birth to three teachers who have students who need services outside the traditional calendar, school calendar year. So since, I think it's 2005, we've had some teachers who have been on that particular cycle where they work probably about six weeks in the summer. And in that process, that's when they're, you know, doing intake for kids who are going to be part of the central program programming and so on. As we were thinking about, one of the things I've been really trying to work on with the district is just trying to create flexibility for jobs that it makes sense to have some more flexibility. And then having some of those conversations, ended up talking with Nancy and several of the district level TOSSAs that work in district level programs. And right now, teaching and learning is having to pay beyond the extended contracts, some additional hours to try and get all the stuff in the summer done. And there are times during the school year where, you know, there's not quite as much that needs to be done in a particular time. And so it would make some logical sense to swap out some time to do that in the summer. So this MOU is really about trying to create some very clear categories that it would apply to, so that there's not just kind of a willy-nilly application, but some clear categories that it would apply to. How the calendars, clarify a little bit about how the calendar gets developed and who has approval and those sorts of things. And then also too, the current language doesn't make any reference to there being the ability to have extended day contracts, or extended contracts, which is what we already have with those TOSSAs. So there's nothing in this agreement that costs more money. In fact, it should actually save the district a little bit of money because teaching and learning wouldn't have to, there'd be some of these additional hours that they're currently paying for now that they would literally be able to swap out for days in a year. So the language there is literally the language in the contract, anything that obviously is underlined would be new language, anything that's struck would be language that we're removing, and then anything that's neither underlined or struck is original language. So some of it's been moved around a little bit, but it is, that's trying to clarify eligibility and then how the calendar develops and then what's the situation with additional days. Questions?
This really seems like a win-win because I know teachers are often looking for more flexibility in their schedule and this will give them that flexibility and save the district money.
And we're also trying to make sure that it's clear that, again, the part, the eligibility part is B that we're adding, hold unique positions with expectations best met while utilizing an atypical contract calendar. You know, for most teachers that are dealing with students.
General classroom.
This is not going to apply to them because their expectations are not best met with an atypical calendar. So it really is trying to make sure that, you know, we're talking about people who, you know, probably are not directly working with students on a regular part of their job. So now is this geared towards like special need students or? Well, some of the, like for example, birth to three stuff is largely special need students. So that's the existing part. The newer part is really more about district level teachers who are on special assignment, who are, might be planning staff development or professional development for other teachers.
Okay.
Might be running the different kinds of programs, induction programs or.
A good example would be like Annie Rins, who's our professional learning coordinator. She does induction in the summer, new teacher workshop. We do a lot of training in the summer because we're trying to do less during the year because of some shortages and sub-costs and stuff like that. And so she's already on an extended contract, but in, I have four TOSSAs that I would probably place on it. My EL coordinator, my HP coordinator, Annie, who is our professional development person, and then Zach. We do quite a bit of work in the summer. And so they were already and have been for several years, had some extra days beyond the contract here. But it was to the point where I was having to come up with money the last summer, a couple summers, just because it was so much, we were exhausting what they had added to their contract. So like for someone like Annie, if we need her an extra five, 10 days in the summer, now we can trade out some school days where maybe she isn't as heavily needed during that day, during the school year, so that she can work more in the summer to meet our needs. So that they're good examples of that. And that varies somewhat by year in terms of what we might need in the summer.
I think it makes perfect sense to have that flexibility for those staffs. So I would recommend that go ahead with them.
Other comments? All right, appreciate your explanation. Certainly the element about potentially cost savings is always welcome. So we thank you for that, but thank you for bringing this forward. So with that, I'm going to look for a motion to approve this MOU as presented to us.
I'm going to vote aye.
Chris D. first, Angela second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. And you get to just stay where you're at. We'll move to item 7.1. This is more of an informational item. This is about Shakopee University, which I'm particularly interested in. So, Amy?
Sure. So Deere and I have actually been talking about this, we've been, for I would say like a couple of years, we started maybe talking about it a little bit. So one of the things that we would like to be able to offer our teachers is an opportunity to kind of go deeper into particular areas of professional development that we know are important part of the work that we're doing within the district. And one of the things that we recognize is that our professional development days, which we have three a year for the secondary and two for elementary, to be honest, they're just not sufficient if we really want to change practice. And so we've worked on that in a couple of ways. We instituted our coaching program with the support of the board several years ago for instructional coaches. We have digital learning coaches to try to provide support with teachers on the job on a day-to-day basis. But even with that, there's.
Early release days.
End of early release days. But even with that, there's, I think, still an ongoing need to try to help our teachers go even further. And so if you see in the purpose, you can see that it reflects that, to be honest, what we know about the research is that it takes at least 48 hours of professional learning to start to see change in the classroom and an impact on achievement. And one challenge that we know our newer teachers have is how to kind of go back, get more cop education, that kind of thing. How do you afford that? How do you pay for that? And so what we've seen across the country and in the metro is some districts start to offer kind of their own credit, their own Shakopee University credit. And it's only good for our own district, but there's some positives about that because there's incentive to encourage people to stay. And then there's also some positive because it's on topics that we know we're trying to help our teachers get better at.
So with that, I'm going to look for a motion to approve this MOU as presented to us. Chris D. Ferb, Angela Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say five, I'm going to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you very much. And you get to stay where you're at. We'll move to item 7.1. This is more of an informational item. This is about Shakopee University, which I'm particularly interested in.
Sure. So Dale and I have actually been talking about this, we began for, I would say like a couple of years, we started maybe talking about it a little bit. So, one of the things that we would like to be able to offer our teachers is an opportunity to kind of go deeper into particular areas of professional development that we know are important part of the work that we're doing within the district. And one of the things that we recognize is that our professional development days, which we have three a year for the secondary and two for elementary, to be honest, are just not sufficient if we really want to change practice. And so we've worked on that in a couple of ways. We instituted our coaching program with the support of the board several years ago for instructional coaches. We have digital learning coaches to try to provide support with teachers on the job on a day-to-day basis. But even with that, there's.
End to early release days.
But even with that, there's, I think, still an ongoing need to try to help our teachers go even further. And so if you see in the purpose, you can see that it reflects that, to be honest, that what we know about the research is that it takes at least 48 hours of professional learning to start to see change in the classroom and an impact on achievement. And one challenge that we know our newer teachers have is how to kind of go back, get more cop education, that kind of thing. How do you afford that? How do you pay for that? And so what we've seen across the country and in the metro is some districts start to offer kind of their own credit, their own Shakopee University credit. And it's only good for our own district, but there's some positives about that because there's incentive to encourage people to stay. And then there's also some positive because it's on topics that we know we're trying to help our teachers get better at. But there is a cost to that. And so when you take a look at it, we would like to suggest, and Dale can jump in here, where we'd like to try a pilot. So do a very finite, limited number of participants and see how it goes. And if you look at the back, you can see a scope and sequence of basically, one, two, three, four, five units, or five courses, that would take a teacher a year and a half to complete. And it really revolves around our instructional framework, which we rolled out a few years ago. And it's really intended towards our second and third year probationary teachers in the district, because it's geared, the topic is geared towards things that we think are kind of part of what I would call onboarding newer staff. We think it has a lot of potential. If this goes well, we'd love to onboard and to go deeper on other areas, like we've talked with Julie Fred about it, like a special ed badge, you know, or kind of a special ed pathway, an EL pathway, and some other areas as well. But we just felt like this would be a nice extension of our induction program and kind of geared towards those that we know typically maybe sometimes struggle to go right back into school in that first, second, or third year, to go back to get their masters. So I'm going to let you add to this.
Yeah, I think a couple of different things. One is that I think it's really important to emphasize that it is really aligned with that characteristics of a Shakopee educator and the personalization of the instructional framework. So the course, this particular strand that's being built is really trying to help take that younger cadre of teachers and really get them wholly versed in that by, you know, they've had some general introduction to that in the regular PD that'll be offered, but then this will allow them to really kind of hone in on that. The reason we focused on second and third year teachers is that sometimes if you get a brand-new teacher and you don't know if they're likely to be coming back based on what the performance is, hopefully if they've been retained, you know, into year two and into year three, you know, the odds of them being a higher quality teacher, that's going to be the kind that we want to make the investment in, is going to be better. And then obviously, if it were something that worked and there were, there was the financial ability to do it, at some point it would be nice to be able to offer it to more people, because the more people you can provide, the better. There is a little bit of a cost to it, because there is the cost of the lane change at the end of the process. And so that does have a financial impact. And that's why we thought at the beginning here, especially when there's not a lot of money available, that it would be good to kind of pilot it. Piloting it allows us to do a couple of things. One, to see if it's a workable, kind of a program, a workable model. It also allows us to keep the cost manageable, especially at a time where there's not a whole lot of additional funds available. And so to do it in a way that, you know, kind of gives us a chance to shape it a little bit and to make it successful. So you can see the cost at the bottom of the front page that says draft. You can see down at the bottom, it's got, the instruction would come from our PD, our TOSSAs.
Yep, teaching and learning.
Yeah. The materials, you can see, probably about $500 total dollars, and then lane changes. If the whole crew went through, the average lane change is under $2,000. Kind of depends on where you're at on salary schedule, but these would likely be BA to BA plus 10 changes. So a maximum of $40,000, would not be more than that, and it would likely be less than that.
And that's likely something that if we didn't offer this, that cohort would be getting them through a St. Mary's or a different.
Yeah, they didn't have to pay. Well, it may or may not. I mean, that's, a lot of times, this might enable them to move earlier than they normally would. Because a lot of times when new teachers come in, it takes two or three years to feel accomplished enough that I can now take on something else. And so oftentimes, people don't start their masters till their fourth or fifth year as opposed to year two or three. The advantage here is that you're, as the district, you're really giving direction to what the learning is about, and you know it's tied directly back to what you've identified as being critically important to instruction in the district. So there's some real value to that. And for them, there's value and there's incentive because it applies to exactly what they're doing, and it gives them opportunity to move earlier than they likely would otherwise. And at times where we might struggle a little bit to be competitive, this gives it another advantage for people to, you know, move forward and perhaps choose to stay as a result.
So when you look at the back and you look at the overview, the way it's set up is that in that first segment, you kind of see the general topics and possible texts. So, you know, we kind of took a look at what we know, like Normandale and the university does in terms of some of their time versus credit. And so, you know, 20 hours of classroom or virtual learning time, this would not include like doing the reading or your assignments. This is like your more in-seat or virtual seat time. And then we really wanted to focus on that second column, which is application time. So they would be then working with our coaches in our buildings and then doing part of that application and reflection as part of it, and that would look like 10 hours too. So we'd actually have them take what they're learning and then try to apply it in their practice with some support from the coaches. And the reason we kind of landed on 10 credits is because that constitutes a lane change. So that's kind of that positive incentive for the teacher. And then the other positive incentive is that they wouldn't get paid to do this, but they would get the credit free of charge, unlike what they would have to do if they were going to a local university or college, so.
Because we get paid back every year to teach.
As long as you stay in Shakopee.
It won't, yeah, it won't convert to another district.
Now, the cost for books and copies, $500, is that per teacher?
No, it's total.
Total?
They'd have to buy their own textbooks and stuff like that. So any textbooks that we would require, just like college, they would have to purchase that, you know.
So the books and materials here are really for the presenters?
For the presenter.
You know, the people who are preparing their curriculum.
Yep.
What would the classes be offered?
It'd have to be outside the contract date. So we haven't gotten that far, because I think we're more in the conceptual understanding level with all of you, but we, this would be another reason for the stretch calendar, because it would mean some of my folks would, you know, be flexing their time to maybe do an evening or even a Saturday potentially. We have to figure out what that would look like.
And we talked about a variety of different possibilities.
Our disciples are doing this on their own, kind of.
Yes, it'd be outside the contract.
Yeah, and so they would do it as a cohort though, so. So that helps them with that collegial.
And it would not be like I pick and choose which things. I mean, the expectation would be you're in a cohort, you're going through all of them. And so you couldn't like just do, you know, right now, you couldn't do like three, six credits here and four credits from the university and have a lane change. This is kind of, you know, that might be something in the future, but right now, we're saying this is the pathway, and so if you're going to participate, you need to do the whole thing.
But after they have the lane change and they continue to get credits from a college, they could continue on to the next 20. Obviously, the college wouldn't accept it, but.
Correct.
Right. But what we had said, we had this discussion with Keith, is what we don't, we want them to complete the whole sequence, not just pick and choose certain ones. We want them to do the whole sequence.
Do you know what the success rate has been at the metro, other metro schools that have offered this program?
Probably the one that's the longest running is Hopkins. Hopkins is doing, they call Hopkins University for a number of years, and they found it to be a really, really helpful tool for retention. And, you know, they have a little different kind of salary structure, because they were one of the first that went, when Q Comp required a massive change of the salary schedule, and they did that. And so this helped contribute to people to be able to move through the new way that they're doing that under their system. So they found it to be very helpful, and they have a very broad program now. It's been in place for quite a while. So a lot of, I don't know the exact percentage right now, but a significant number of their staff get Hopkins University on a regular basis.
Go ahead, Paul.
No, no.
If somebody had four credits or six credits from somewhere else and then got four Shakopee University credits, these are standalone lane change. These come in a bundle of 10, they don't get handed out to some.
That's what we've said so far.
They're partial.
Are all second and third year teachers going to be required to participate in this? Oh, no, they have to volunteer.
It's all volunteer.
We'd only have space for 20.
Just to keep the cost manageable at the moment.
I think you did a good job of checking out, you were Annie that knew the number, potential number, was it like 60 or 70 people would probably invite in to participate?
But of that, it would be 20.
It would have to be, first come, first served, 20 spots.
With some variance, because we're trying to make sure that we have a well-rounded group. So we wouldn't want necessarily just 20 special ed teachers or.
That's true.
You know, 20 elementary teachers. We're looking for a mix.
Representation across the district.
If I understand this correctly, which by the way, I think the program was phenomenal, I just really am intrigued and pleased by this. Thinking back to the cost element, if they have to complete the program, and this takes an end of fall of 2020, so it's a year and a half from now, the impact of this is not something we're necessarily, in fact, we wouldn't be building it into next year's budget, because it wouldn't happen until they're completed. So we have time to, I was going to ask, have you talked to Jeff about this? Is he thinking about it? But it really wouldn't affect our budget.
Not for next year.
Spring of 2021 is when it would really come online, in terms of the cost.
So we can.
There would be, I will say, there would be the small cost of the books and, you know, the materials.
But the big chunk is downstream, back to the.
I would recommend that we bounce this up of Jeff to see what he thinks.
Well, I think that we're in just our learning phase now, so that'll be part of the discussion. Any other questions? I applaud the. All right, thanks for bringing that to us. All right, let's move on to item 7.2. Brian, you want to come on up and talk to us about District Finals Project, our key finalists?
Going for the classics. Big stuff hanging around. Phone project. So I wanted to take a couple minutes tonight, do a little background on this project, let you meet the vendors that are the two finalists. So let me set it up for you. Existing system, it's about.